Good evening. Good evening. The Planning Commission meeting of April 5, 2023 is called to order. The Planning Commission meeting is being broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamlined live in high definition on the city's webpage, and on Apple TV, Roku, and Amazon Fire devices, using a free app called Screenweave and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. Meetings are also archived on the city website for viewing anytime at glendaleca.gov/Agendas. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. City staff will be submitting the questions and comments in real time to the appropriate person. Current Planning Commission agendas are available by visiting our website at www.glandaleca.gov. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Crockson?
Here.
Commissioner Lee is absent. Commissioner Minasian is also absent. Commissioner Shabazian?
Here.
And Chair Fuentes?
Here. Report regarding posting of the agenda.
The agenda for the April 5, 2023 regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission was posted on March 29, 2023, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Approval of minutes, we're gonna hold that for next meeting because there's only two of us here. Okay, oral communications, I don't see any card. Any board commission member comments? Okay.
No comments.
Review of our calendar. We're going to item number three, election of chairperson pro tem. So we're gonna go through the nomination. Staff member opens the meeting and calls for nomination. May I?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'd like to. Yeah, which I did last time. I'd like to nominate Commissioner Shabazian for chairperson pro tem.
Do I second now, or?
No need for second.
Oh, okay.
So you may call the roll. Other roll?
Very quickly before we do that. I mean, if I don't vote for myself, we would have to push this. Normally, we would abstain, so.
You can also vote for yourself.
Okay. I'm actually asking for maybe legal team. I don't know if that's, if I can vote for myself.
You can certainly vote for yourself, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Crockson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shabazian?
Yes.
And Chair Fuentes?
Yes. Okay, so we now have a chairperson pro tem.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Moving on to item, old business, no old business. And item number eight, new business. Item is 1880 Loma Vista Drive. This is for a wireless telecommunications facilities, permit number PWTF 2210696. Project is proposing to construct a new 68-foot monopine wireless telecommunications facility with 15 attached antennas at the northern end of the park, 33 foot past the fire road gate. The proposal also includes a 10-foot CMU enclosure and required equipment. Can we have the staff? Okay.
Yes, we'd like to introduce Chloe Cuffel, making her debut presentation before the Planning Commission for this particular item.
Good evening. Don't see my slides up yet. Okay. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Chloe Cuffel, and I'm the case planner for tonight's hearing subject, a proposed wireless telecommunications facility at 1880 Loma Vista. The subject site is located directly north of Mayor's Bicentennial Park, which is a neighborhood park in the northeast area of Glendale. It's directly adjacent to the Glendale Two Freeway and is roughly between College Hills and Verdugo Woodlands neighborhoods. The proposed cell tower is located on undeveloped city-owned land directly north of the park. It's approximately 33 feet past the park on the eastern side of an existing fire road. The land is zoned Special Recreation, which our zoning code defines as intended for public and private open space and recreational uses, and is intended to protect open space, natural physical features, and scenic resources. This proposal will not be detrimental to that use and is distanced from the recreational areas and designed to blend in with the natural landscape. Access to the site is provided via Loma Vista Drive, which is also the park's entrance. The fire road where the project is being proposed is on the northern end of the park and is gated. Access to the fire road will not be interrupted, and the project has been reviewed by FIRE, and no comments were provided. There are several existing pine trees on the site's location. As you can see here, there's a line of pines between the freeway and the park that are all approximately 50 feet tall. And then this pine tree here is 56 feet tall. The applicant is proposing a 68-foot-tall monopine cell tower and enclosed equipment designed to provide service to North Glendale. The city of Glendale classifies this as a Class VI antenna, meaning an antenna mounted on the exterior of a freestanding structure that has been specifically built for the sole purpose of supporting a wireless telecommunications facility using camouflage design techniques that only partially hide or disguise the antenna panels, but leave them partially visible. And all Class VI antennas in the SR zone are required to come before the Planning Commission. The proposed monopine includes 15 attached antennas and a 10-foot CMU enclosure to house all the required equipment. The structure is located over 400 feet away from the nearest residential property line and is over 200 feet away from the nearest ridge line. It's a desirable location that will fill a gap in coverage without reducing parking capacity and also maintains a distance from residential and commercial locations. Noise is not a concern at this location, primarily due to its proximity to the Glendale Two Freeway, but it does emit a noise of 67 dB-A. The applicant supplied proof of compliance with all FCC rules and regulations in their radio frequency electromagnetic energy compliance report. Staff is recommending two specific conditions: to reduce the height of the monopine to 65 feet total and to have the applicant provide landscaping in the form of two 24-inch box pine trees adjacent to the new monopine. These photo simulations show the view of the proposed monopine from north and south. The pine trees visible on the simulation west of the proposal average around 50 feet tall and create the barrier I spoke about earlier between the freeway and the park. Those trees come to an end just before the fire road, meaning there are no trees directly north or west of the proposed tower to kind of shield it and help it blend in. Hence, staff is recommending a few trees be planted in that area. Okay. Now, I'm gonna show you side-by-sides of the applicant's proposed height of 68 feet and staff's recommendation of 65 feet. For some context, the original proposal was for a 75-foot tower. Staff came back with 65, and we landed it, yeah. Staff is maintaining the condition, though, to bring it down to 65 feet based on the coverage reports, which we'll look at in a bit. Okay, here again, 65 next to 68, which, without much context, is very minor looking. I think that these will provide a little bit more context. This is the photo simulation of the proposal at 68 feet. That tree sort of in the foreground to the right is the same tree that's visible here in the photo on the right. That tree is 56 feet tall, so it's about 12 feet shorter than the proposal. And that's the nearest tree. I think this also provides a little helpful perspective. The line of trees between the freeway and the park averaged around 50 feet, and you can see they end at the fire road before the subject site. So that's why we believe bringing down the height and also planting trees will help make this tower blend in more with the area. Okay, and now we'll talk about the coverage. So this is, the applicant provided this coverage report. This is existing. Here are side-by-sides of the coverage that would be provided for a 68-foot tower and 65-foot tower. Thank you to the applicant for providing these. You can see, kind of in this area, it's not limited to this area, but that's primarily where the difference would be if we were to bring the tower down. So staff is recommending approval of the project with the following conditions. And I'm just gonna read the first two as the others are standard with our wireless telecommunications facilities. So that is, again, that the applicant reduce the height of the monopine to 65 feet total. And two, that the applicant shall plant two 24-inch box pine trees adjacent to the new monopine to the satisfaction of the Director of Community Development. And lastly, I have received no public comments regarding this project. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we call on John McDonald.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you, Chloe. That was a great presentation. I won't add much more onto that, but.
State your name and address for the record.
John McDonald, 65 Post, Suite 1000, Irvine.
Thank you.
So the intended area of coverage, by the map we have right there, is part of North Glendale, particularly, I believe it's Carrullos Avenue. We weren't able to get anything in that area because it's all single-family residential. So going south proved to be an issue. There is a monopole that's about half a mile south, but it's too far south. So what we were able to do is go to the east. The added elevation, there's about a 300-foot elevation difference that allowed us to still cover that area as well as part of the Two Freeway, which is why we didn't have to make, we could reduce the height of the monopole, the added elevation. The, I'm gonna skip to, okay. I want to address the two box trees, the pine trees. We are amenable to planning. My only request is that, since the area we want to cover is gonna be to the west of the freeway, we put the trees maybe slightly north so that when they do grow, they don't cover the antennas. And then in regards to the 65 for 68-foot difference, I know that three feet maybe doesn't seem like a lot, but the biggest issue that we have is that primarily when you're in between two wireless facilities, or maybe three, when you're kind of equidistant, your phone has an issue connect, figuring out which server to connect to. And so generally, when there's overlap, it's a lot easier, and you don't have a coverage loss or a service loss, et cetera. So the three feet, if we go right here, would really assist with the site to the south and to the site to the northwest, which would, you know, hopefully reduce those coverage issues when people are driving, you know, over long distances. Sometimes your phone will cut out. Sometimes you'll have a drop in coverage. That can be alleviated, hopefully, by the extra three feet. That's what we're planning on. Other than that, Chloe touched about on everything, and great presentation. That's all I have.
Okay.
Can you? Sorry. Chairperson, can you go back to page 11? I just want to compare the two. And then can you go to page 12? Which is next page on the presentation.
I apologize.
That's okay. Okay, thank you.
Can you explain, between like the green, yellow, and purple, I understand how it's labeled on the chart, but what are we talking about in terms of, you know, tangible difference in coverage between the three?
Of course. So the worst coverage, or the kind of like pinkish-to-red areas, are only good for outdoor coverage. So it's, if you're inside of a building, you're inside of a moving vehicle, you're gonna have limited to no coverage there. The yellow areas are gonna be okay for being in a vehicle, and then the green areas are gonna be okay for being in a building. So you should be able to get good to decent coverage in the green areas if you're inside of a building, and then it kind of drops off after that.
And are these coverages including other AT&amp;T sites or is it specific just to this monopole that's being proposed?
It's, so we have, so you'll see the, this is, this would be the standalone for the site here. Let me go, if I go back. This is the existing coverage AT&amp;T has with the other sites around our proposed facility. And then this would be at the 68 feet, and then this would be at the 65 feet.
Understood, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions from him.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe for staff.
Staff questions.
Any closing remarks, or?
No.
I think, okay. No closing remarks from the applicant? I think?
I think there were some questions from staff. Did you?
Well, I have a question for staff, but.
Staff, yeah, okay.
Go ahead now, okay. From staff's perspective, what was the rationale, other than neighboring trees being a little bit shorter, for requiring a three-foot decrease? I mean, from my perspective, it seems pretty minor. And if we're taking coverage away from homes for a three-foot visual difference, it seems a bit strange from my perspective. So can we kind of understand the rationale there?
Yeah, that's kind of why I threw in that the original proposal was 75. We were just trying to bring it down as much as possible because it is so much larger than the other structures on the site or in the area. And when we talked with our IS department, we felt that the coverage was still fairly substantial that was going to be provided with the 65 feet. So we were just hoping to bring it down as much as possible, but, yeah.
So staff's rebuttal was at 65, and then they came back at 68? And then upon receipt of the 68, staff maintained 65? Am I understanding it correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm kind of, that was my question. That's kind of where I'm going. I was trying to see, and I thought maybe, kind of looking at the map and the zoning map, looking at what, you know, surrounds it, but it seems like it's the freeway and it's open space. So visually, it seems like it wouldn't make that much of a difference looking from distance. But looking at the map and comparing the two, it's a pretty large area that's being covered better. And I don't live in those neighborhoods, so I don't know how it is. But looking at the map, it looks like they might not be having reception there. But I kind of, those were the questions, or that's where I was going as well. I don't have other questions from staff.
Do you have comments on your end, or?
I don't have any, I don't have much. How do you call this? The additional three feet, if it's gonna give more coverage and expand the, you know, to some of the residents not having dropped calls or failed calls and all that, it's not too much of a significance for me. So I really don't see much of a difference between the 65 or the 68. And that's where I'm coming from.
Yes, Chair Fuentes. Have you closed the public comment portion of the meeting, or is it still open?
We're still, yeah.
You're still asking questions.
Asking questions, yeah.
I believe that there is a member of the public who wishes to speak, though there are no, there are no callers.
I don't have any cards.
Yes, I believe the gentleman will submit a card as soon as he's finished.
Okay, then we'll open it for public.
My name is Craig Waitman, and I live near where the tower is going in. The, in looking at the maps there, the area that is being lost, that is all pretty well-developed homes. There's no new ones going in or anything. What I would, one question that I would ask would be, the difference between 68 and 65 covers about how many homes would be lost as a percentage? I mean, if it was three homes, that's one thing. If it's 30 homes, that might be something else.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one last question from staff. And you did mention it, but I am just, I forgot. How far was this from the park? You did mention the distance.
Well, it's 33 feet past, like, the gate where the park ends, but it's gotta be over 100 feet from where the actual recreation area is.
Okay.
Yeah, there's like parking and stuff in between.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Would the applicant please respond to them?
So the homes in the area that are by there, you're not, they're not, they're still going to have coverage. The main thing that we're trying to kind of avoid in that area is dropped calls. So, you know, given, it's less than a quarter mile, so if there are, there's probably at least, I'd say, a few hundred homes in that area, and they're still gonna have service, but we're just trying to avoid having them drop calls or service loss or anything like that. So they'll still have service. It's just, they'll have to deal with a few more issues.
Okay, thank you. No more questions from staff or applicant? So I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing portion. Enters in.
I mean, if you don't mind, Chairperson Fuentes. So I'm personally inclined to move at the original 68-foot proposal. I echo your comments that I really don't see three feet being a major difference in terms of visibility or a nuisance to, or an eyesore. And I think the added value to the residents of this neighborhood is worth the quote-unquote "sacrifice" of the additional three feet. I agree with staff in planting the two 24-inch box pine trees to better mask the monopole in the future, but I don't really see the emphasis on 65. So I would, I would move with the revision of 68 feet as intended being.
And also can that?
Wait. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Do I still have to read the motion for the approval, or no more?
I believe, for the, for the record, if Commissioner Crockson, that there was a motion that was attached to the packet?
They have the motion. Go ahead and read it.
You don't have to, you don't have to read all of the various findings and the conditions.
Yeah, just the first paragraph.
Paragraph, please. Yes, thank you.
Do we need to vote, all of us first, or?
You can just go ahead and make the motion and read it into the record.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Crockson, seconded by Commissioner Member Shabazian that upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of current record relative to wireless telecommunications facility case number PWTF 2210696, located at 1880 Loma Vista Drive, and after having conducted a public hearing on said matter, that the Planning Commission thereby approves wireless telecommunications facility. PWTF 2210696 in accord with the findings and conditions set forth below.
And that, the conditions.
With the minor revision on, yes. Condition number one, let it be 68 feet versus 60.
Condition, actually, condition number nine in the motion, which is that the applicant reduce the height of the monopine to 65 feet total. And that condition would be stricken from the record, and all the remaining conditions would.
With that, motion by Board, uh, forgive me.
Roll call.
Designer View Board, by Commissioner Crockson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shabazian?
Yes.
And Chair Fuentes?
Yes.
The motion passes 3-0. Okay.
Any Community Development Department updates?
We have no updates at this time. There will be a Planning Commission meeting in two weeks. We do have items on that agenda. So we'll see everyone back here in two weeks.
Will I join? I join?
Motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, thank you very much.
Congratulations.